This is the owner of the property on Bellevue Road. This is an application for a variance for the farmer's porch on the front of a single-family home. Mr. Matty purchased this property, it's the site of the former Star of the Sea Church. Notice in your application packages on the dimensional table on page two, the lot and the house comply with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, right size, right width, correct setbacks, two and a half stories. The one variance he needs is a five-foot variance to the farmer's porch on the front of the house, so the porch would be set back 20 feet. The house is 25 feet from the street, which is what's required, the porch is 20 feet from the street.
So four foot seven on your dimensional, right?
Yes. So what we're looking for is, you know, minor dimensional variance. We've talked to the city councilor, he sent notices out to the neighborhood, we had a neighborhood meeting at the Kennedy Center a couple of months ago, only one neighbor attended that meeting, didn't seem to be any, I didn't detect that there was any opposition to this porch on this house. The reason why we're asking for this, the topography of this lot changes, the lot drops off in the back, the elevation ranges from 89 feet in front to 83 in the back, the six-foot elevation change, and to push the house further back to get the porch out of the setback, will create a problem with the back of the house, causing that to become a story, and causing a three-story variance and a three-and-a-half-story and a walkout basement. So that's the hardship that relates to the topography of why we're asking for this variance.
Thank you. Any questions?
My client apologized for not being here tonight, he had a childcare emergency, he couldn't make it.
So you can pay for counsel?
Thank you.
Is there anyone who have any questions?
No questions, or counsel.
Do you have anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, close. Everybody here from DPW, DPD Bograss and Project, comments hours called, install stone and concrete survey gentlemen to delineate the public right of way, the mine shall be set by a professional land surveyor, and install prior to acceptance of ASBILs. Confirm the house number to be used with engineering department public works three. Upon completion of this project, all ASBIL plans showing utilities, building footprints, reference found benchmarks, define total site facilities right away, needs to be submitted along with digital file. The ASBILs shall be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or engineer. If there's anything further, please advise. Is there anyone opposed during the side? Opposed during the side? First call, second call, third call. Want to speak?
Suzanne Law, 115 in Bellevue.
Okay.
We've only received one notice from, I believe, Mr. Matty, about the porch for the 14th, but mostly it's just debris sweeping into the yard from just a messy job site, but no notices really, nothing for this neighbor here, who was apparently not interested in neighbors, is what I heard, so that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone opposed during the side? Last call. Call up by the hearing close, I mean, they're looking for four, seven inches, so I'll be voting against.
I'll be voting against. Same.
Thank you. Motion, please?
Man number Z seventeen dash twenty-three, Robert Matty, manager of Warlock Rocker, L.L.C., for various construction, the farmer's porch on the front setback with the premises number ninety-nine or one-on-one, Bellevue Road, could you make a motion to grant the variance?
Okay. My motion, see you now, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No more. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. On the old business, case number Z seventeen seventeen, Lenny Chen for finding a change of use in the official retail, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the premise sixty-seven Adams Street. The advocate representative here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Admiral Evans, Director, my name is Attorney Jack P. Belrock, behalf of the applicant, Lenny Chen. The chairman is right here, seated to my right. The chair said this is an application for finding a change of use from office to retail at sixty-seven Adams Street here in the city of Quincy. According to public record, the building was built in eighteen forty, it's a three-unit commercial building, was considered to be the storefront unit historically was the century twenty-one. The first floor unit historically was a travel agency, second floor historically was an accountant's office, is my understanding. Building's been sold in the last year, it's currently vacant, there's currently one lease that's been signed, subject to zoning approval, doesn't put a nail shot in the, considered to be the storefront unit. I have some additional plans for that. This building is pre-existing, not conforming in regards to parking, which is why a finding is required. The building does come with four off-street parking spaces, however, there is additional legal parking available. This property intersects with Eddie Street, Eddie Street has legal parking, I've been up and down Eddie Street, all the homesteads, far as I can see, all have driveways, so we shouldn't be competing any homeowners, there's also signage, twelve parking on Eddie Street, which seems to indicate that the intent is that members of the public will be parking on the street. In addition, across the street from this building is Montelio's parking lot, ours that we shouldn't be using, Montelio's parking lot, there's legal spots in front of the parking lot on Adams Street. In addition, on the same side of the street at sixty-seven, we have the dairy freeze, merely before dairy freeze, there is additional legal parking on the street, so there is parking available, might have to walk a little bit, might have to drive a little bit, but the parking is there. I'm very familiar with this building, I live on Chertan Drive, which is down the street, I passed by it for many, many years, I've also gone into the building in the past, used to utilize the travel agency on the first floor. Personally, I haven't had any issues parking over the years when I've gone into the building. I don't believe that the change of use from office to retail is really going to be substantially more detrimental in regards to impact in regards to that area. As my client would like to utilize the building, we're sure the city would like to see the building utilized as a very prominent spot on Adams Street without the finding. The building remains vacant, which I don't think anybody would desire. There was a community meeting that was held at the request of Counselor Kane, there was a total of three people that attended it, I didn't detect any opposition, I didn't detect any opposition from Counselor Kane. I know there was an issue at one point, there was a proposal, there was going to be a massage therapy, store is an additional tenant in the property, that lease has been terminated, that's not the case, the only tenant so far is a nail sharp. So we're asking for the board to look very good with regards to finding in regards to change of use.
And he's just going to use one floor or the whole building?
No, the nail sharp is going to use one of the three units. It is, what's it in the storefront? Storefront unit, first floor unit, second floor unit, the nail sharp's going into the storefront, the other two are, we're still looking for tenants, but the intent would be for it to be retail and not office.
All three floors of this?
All three units, yeah.
Just don't see where people would park down the street, go just now. Seems like a tough, it's a tough building, park, get out, leave business, go back in, if you add two more other retailers there, just seems like it's a tough spot for that itself, but I didn't even realize there was three units in, I thought it was two different, it was three.
Well, there's a small unit on the third floor, it's substantially smaller than the other two, if there isn't additional, I had it labeled as considered three units.
I don't know, these are my questions, I guess I just didn't know. Any questions?
Again, I would, what type of retail would be put in the third floor then, as opposed to office? You know, I mean, an office to me would seem to fit the neighborhood and that and the building itself, but.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, I think, I guess, my answer is this, everybody knows what's going on in the city of Quincy in regards to redevelopment, but I mean, prior to that time, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there's been a collective office space available in the city, there's been a lot of space that hasn't been able to be rented at least for years. It's an older building, the building was built in eighteen forty, it's not in the best condition. There's much better space that probably can't be rented, or at least out of office space, so when you keep that in mind, I think it would be tough. I've been in the building.
Would that same issue apply to a retail in that, in that building?
No, I mean, generally, I mean, I think people, usually retail, the rents, if you're a landlord, the rents for retail are higher than it is for office, and people are willing to invest more money to retail than office, because they think that the rate of return is going to improve. So people are going to, are going to be more likely to sink money into something than that's retail than office. That's my experience. If they have to stay, I mean, first of all, if they have to stay as an office, I don't think he's going to be able to rent it at least at all, based on my observations of the building. Second of all, you can have the same issues with parking, I also would point out to you under zoning, if the building was conforming, it's not ours, if it was conforming, whether there's office or retail, the number of spaces is the same, so we're not increasing the non-conforming request.
Thank you.
Any questions?
How many employees would be working in these two stories, two floors?
Well, I don't even talk about the nail sharp, again, the other two, the other two.
One, he has.
One.
Okay. How many employees would be working here?
Well, let's take a look at the plan. I'd say two to three, based on counting the number of stations on the plan.
And how many stations are there?
I see four.
Four stations, okay. So that'd be three employees?
I'd say two to three, two to three.
Not four?
Well, that fact that four there doesn't mean necessarily going to hire, I'd say.
Well, I only ask because it's parking for what, three cars up back?
Four.
Four cars up back?
No, I understand that.
So if your employees show up to work, there's no place for anybody else to park outside the street?
The employees are going to drive there, that might not necessarily be so, the public access to that building. Two forty-five MBK bus goes right by there.
How many people take the bus to get their pedicures and nails done?
Well, I think we're talking about, we're talking about the employees now.
Once the employees are there, how many, you know, it's a retail operation, people are going to go.
Correct. Well, I think if you get, another way to look at it, we got Eddie Street, so we got that available for parking, probably have a quicker turnover for that than in office, I think people may be longer for if they're going in for an office use. There's different ways of looking at it, but I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further question? Thank you. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call? No one, third call, close. We have a letter from DPW or DPD Bograss and Project, comments hours called, first guy on the Trump address area will be preached through the development party, dimensioned rates, paving area and driveway entrances, any further please advise. We have a letter here from the council, it's against. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone opposed during the side? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Robert Perkins, twenty-four eighth street.
First and good floor.
Yes, I received notes from this from Ian Kane, city councilor, I'm opposed to the finding, I don't know what you call it, Commissioner. This building was, I guess, purchased last August, since that time, there's been absolutely nothing done to it, except for spray painting, the cracked concrete, to try and show more spaces that are actually in existence there. I actually have a picture of it on Google met records from last year, where a car was parked that way, now they try to put two in, which would be go around the sidewalk. One of them is actually backed up against the gas meter, that looks great, so I don't have a lot of confidence in anything that I've seen here. The property, as he says, is disrepair, it's had a rental sign, but it's had a shingle hanging off, there's refuse in the yard, it's barely ever shoveled out during the storms if it is, and in terms of the parking, the council here just offered up Eddie Street as commercial parking for a nail salon. As a resident there, I have a problem with it, we already have a tight street where there's cars already parked up on the curbs to make room, because there's not enough room for cars to pass each other or get by. So, I mean, maybe people take the bus, the two fifteen runs every half hour, I think, I don't say it. I think the quality of the neighborhood, you know, is ours a little better, I'm not confident there's been inadequate effort to really rent this. I also have concerns about three stories of retail, plus employees. I'm not saying.
Thank you. For anyone else opposed during the side? Second call?
John Rutherford, six two normal road, the M against this project is wanting to get on record, they can keep it like it is and they can rent it, I actually saw this listing on the MLS, I think they're, am I correct, nineteen hundred, you were asking for that first floor?
Right, John, directed here.
But, I mean, the bottom line is that it's not for retail, it's very congested there, to have people park on the street, I've been to license board meetings before, and I think honestly, this is a get-around to get a massage parlor in there, because by you guys changing the use, they now go and they say it's some sort of different thing when they go back to the license board, or they come back to the zoning, and by you guys changing the use, you haven't opened the door to possibly maybe making it a massage parlor. So I strongly vote, just to keep it like it is, they can still rent it, I really don't see why they're up here unless there's some alter, you know, alter of motive, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else opposed during the side? I have a couple of letters here. Wants to miss the Duke. Just the same.
Sandy.
No.
Robert Perkins.
Yeah.
Did I just hear that?
He just spoke.
Okay, so I'm not going to read your letter, just fine, but it'll be in the record.
Or it shouldn't be. Is there another one opposed?
Dear Mr. Duke, please make this available to the zoning board of appeals. I'm not in favor of the zoning change of use from office to retail at sixty-five seven Adams Street. The regions of Adams and Hilda and Adams and Eddie Streets are already very congested. I rarely exit the Adams Street and the Hilda Street, which I live on, due to the traffic there. It's not easier, but it's not great, it is easier but not great exiting Eddie to go towards Quincy Center. My dentist makes pizza, Shore Supermarket, and my insurance agent. There is very little area for parking at the location of sixty-five seven Adams, and a very narrow drive from Adams Street that goes behind the building. How would vehicles enter and, capital letters, exit at this tiny drive? I hope they would not flow onto Eddie Street from this region behind the proposed retail store, that would really be an impediment to folks who live in the neighborhood of Eddie, Dot Gray and Hilda. We have to go into Eddie or Hilda to get home, any further improvement to our travel is surely not desirable, please just, please just wait and try to occupy the building with a low-traffic intensive business, as before respectfully submitted Allen Atkinson thirty-two Hilders.
This is the council who's opposed?
Dear Marvin, I am writing this right in opposition to the application for a finding of sixty-five seven Adams Street, the change of property zoning from office to retail. I've had a chance to speak with the applicant, the applicant's lawyer, led to inform me that a lease has already been signed for a nail salon to a company, company, occupy, I'm sorry, the first floor of this property. Historically, this property has been used with no more than office space, including travel agency and insurance business, which require limited parking. The property has room for four parking spaces at most. The intent of the applicant is to use on-street parking at area locales, including Eddie Street, Adams Street, at Montelio's and Tedeschi's, and in front of the homes in between Teresa Road and Dairy Freeze, which are already heavily burdened during this business months, during this business months of operation. I've had the opportunity to hold a public meeting with the applicant and the applicant's attorney, I've also heard from many of the local area residents of Eddie Street, Green Hill Street, Hilda Street and Teresa and Loyola Roads, not one constituent has voiced support for this proposal, as it is universal belief, this change of zoning is inappropriate for this particular property. I kindly ask that you do not approve this finding, thank you, in regards to Ian Kane, city councilor of one and three.
The council, not one, and call up by the hearing close, I'll be voting against the council, this is his area, he knows what's going on, I didn't like the parking up there in retail, it's going to be cool, so I'll be voting no.
I find the idea of retail, the chairman just being too open to, otherwise, so I too would be voting no.
Likewise. No.
Can I have a motion, please? The jury. Does anybody have a comment, or?
Well, I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, I'm certainly not going to question the credibility of Counselor Kane. I did hear a letter that just read into the record, or indicates that everybody who spoke from that area is against it, as he pointed out, as I pointed out to a community meeting, there's three people that were here, and the three.
Counselor, we had to read it.
No, I understand that, I understand that, but I guess what I tried to say is what was read and what I saw with my own eyes when I was here, that's why we do these things, was quite different. The other thing that I would point out, yes, historically, it was an office, maybe it was even a house once upon a time, I don't know, it looks to me like it, it may have been a house, but, you know, there's retail there, in that area, not understanding the fact of what was going on with that building, on both sides of the street. You know, from the Adams mansion to first court parkway, that's primarily residential, it's residential A, and from the parkway up to the seven-eleven, it's mixed use, and there are residential buildings in that area, so I would suggest that what my client was proposing, is proposing, really isn't out of character with the other properties that are there. The other thing you got to keep in mind is that the issue is, as we all know, whether or not it's subject detrimental to the neighborhood if there's a change of use, from what I'm hearing, people are complaining and they're saying, well, there's a problem with the parking, there's a problem with the parking.
Counselor?
Yeah?
Come on, we got a line.
I understand that.
Maybe the floor for a second, let's move it along.
I'm going to ask this people to draw on their projects.
Okay. Can I have a motion to draw on there?
Yes. This chairman, man, is seventeen, sorry, Z seventeen dash seventeen, Lenny Chen, for a finding to change the use of office to retail, that the increase in re-existing non-conforming parking will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the premise of number sixty-five seven Adams Street, could you make a motion to withdraw, to matter with that request?
Second.
Motion remains second, and the motion, see you now, in favor? Opposed? No more.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Let's take five minutes and we'll come right back. Get a dog. Walker. Now, now you sound like you're near us.
Okay.
Can I get that?
That's for six two two.
Thank you. All right, from the back order, counselor, another counselor, like to get out of here, they have long days. Case number seventeen twenty-four. Seventeen twenty-four, ninety, nine twenty-one East Quanum Street, John Denise Dow.
I'm John Dow, and this is my brother Denise. We're here asking for a variance on a property at nine twenty-one, East Quanum Street, and our intention is to put a smaller vision and an elevation shaft to allow places, your father, to move in with us, he needs, he needs a place to live.
My father is blind, almost completely blind, he'll be eighty-nine in July, and he lives currently alone in New York, but due to age and the like, that should be coming untenable, so it's either move to Boston, move in with us, or move into some sort of facility. So, but the only way to do it, because of the way the property is, is built into ledge in the back, is to add an elevator, because pretty soon he won't be able to do the stairs at all, so hence, I think you have the application.
Yeah.
So, it's a setback on the right side of the house.
Yeah, I see it. Any questions, the applicant?
Where are you from in New York?
Westchester County.
Because you're going to be wearing a Yankee hat.
No, he will not, he actually has a Red Sox later.
Oh!
We made sure of that.
He still smokes.
Yes, I know, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
I live in Orange County, across the river, across the Tappas River, in the north.
There you go.
And I thought that hat would be a nice thing.
He actually has a Met, he has a Met hat, we were raised Met.
That changes it.
He was a Met fan, I was a Red Sox fan, that's why I'm a Met fan.
Okay, that sounds good.
Too many New Yorkers up here.
Yes, too many of us.
Thank you, we have a seat. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call, close? They have a letter here, dated February twenty-second, nine twenty-one East Quanum Street, case number Z twenty, seventeen twenty-four, DPD Bograss and Project, they have no comments. Anyone opposed during the side? First call, second call? Counselor?
Yes, thank you. I'm actually, I live at seventy-four Ashworth Road, so they are exactly right behind me, so that's what Squanum is, that neighborhood's all about, it's about family, what these folks are doing are great, and I welcome the project.
Very good, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, thank you, folks.
Is there anyone else opposed during the side? Call up by the hearing close. I see what they're doing, they're just looking for that to go on the side for the elevator on the side setback, connections in the back of the house, we've been talking about probably seven inches. I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor.
Likewise.
Yeah, my eighty-some-year-old father from New York is here as well, so I understand, glad you're doing it, it's a much better option than the old house.
Agree.
My eighty-four-year-old father is still in New York, and if he can stay there. With my brother, so it's okay. I love my father.
I'm going to send him the website for this.
To us, the chairman, man, is Z seventeen dash twenty-four, the John Denise Dow, for various construction, vision, lit elevator on the premises number nine twenty-one East Quanum Street, could you make a motion to grant the variance?
Second?
Second.
On a motion, see you now, in favor? Opposed? No more. Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for hanging in, I didn't see you back there.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Brother on the old business, case number sixteen oh eight one, last number sixteen, I think we have. It's one oh eight Garfield Street, put in a new two-and-a-half-story residential structure, is there a rock candidate representative here?
There he comes.
Steven.
There he comes. There he comes.
Good evening, members of the board, the record, Steve DeRosh, the Poncivelli Survey Associates, ninety-five White Street, the city of Quincy, here. I'm here this evening with my clients, Mr. Gary Gabriel and Mr. Mark McIntyre, who have proposed developments in this particular lot at one oh eight Garfield Street. We have seeking a variance from the board to construct a two-and-a-half-story, two-family structure here at one oh eight Garfield Street. The reason we're seeking a variance is because of the irregularity of the lot, the lot is not a regular lot. I realize you guys have had a busy night, and you're going to lead to a busy night after a new lease, so I want to keep short in this week, all right? I never saw any of the comments in the DPW, but I'm sure there's nothing in there that's going to be different from what we always see. We know that we have to produce a drainage plan, but I'd like to sit with the engineering department first, to find out how much they want, and we infiltrate, you know, part of drainage. As far as parking is concerned, we have plenty of room on this lot, we're looking at putting two tannin spaces behind the building, two nine-by, nine-by-eighteen spaces, side by side. Okay, two, two tannin spaces. Do we pull in the driveway, turn to the left and go in, and then go another nine feet and turn it again?
They're going to have two tannin spaces in the back.
Correct, yeah. And there's plenty of room at the front of the building for guests parked. Again, I don't want to pull this stuff, this ceiling up any longer, I'm sure that there's not anybody here that's in favor of this, we have tried, tried, I tried, have you, you don't need to know this, we actually were before this board about six weeks ago, this is, you were in here.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and in the interim, we're trying to get a hold of Counselor Palmucci, and shame on me, I gave the wrong information to my client, who was trying to contact Mr. Kane, I think, but he was the, yeah, counselor, but we finally got a hold of Mr. Palmucci, he told us. He told us that the residents there were going to set up a meeting because there were a couple or three different issues in that area that were coming before this board. Never heard back. I mean, it's not like we didn't try, okay? If the board has any questions regarding this project, then we will happily answer them for you.
Why are we doing tandem parking behind it?
I figure two cars possibly per unit.
Yeah, but I mean, you did a lot.
Pitched for it. We do have plenty of room back there. But again, we're here to take any suggestions that the board may have also.
So you're just going to be just parking back there?
Or we can park right here for the person, maybe for guests parking. Yep. And then we'll drive in and two teams here and two teams down there. But we're leaving enough room behind the house, obviously. But we only could get the...
You do want to get the...
We do want to give the people some, some area back there. If there's anything heavy, whatever, whatever. The only thing we're here for, based on what I didn't mention, is the variances for the...
You can speak up slowly, we can hear.
Yeah. Again, the only reason we're here this evening is because of the variance needed for the side yard setbacks. We do meet the front and ready yard setbacks. The lot is a pre-existing conforming lot in a business deep district.
Any questions? Anyone see the parking? Do you have a parking? Yeah, I didn't have it back in here.
I have no question.
Any questions, I can...
Two spaces in the front and four in the back, about six.
I think that's going to be more than enough.
No questions?
No. Our need is four, right?
Yeah, but they're tandem, so the people park tandem, they don't.
They don't have the front parking, they don't make that.
Right, if you do that, if you do this.
I think we have enough room for four without... We do have enough for four spaces back there. But again, we want to try to give the people some yard room. But we can always just use eighteen, so you can give another twenty feet yard for the yard. Again, at the pleasure of the board.
Any questions?
Good.
Questions? No? Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Paul.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. A letter here from the DPW. Do I have it? Yes. Seven twenty-nine, two thousand sixteen, number one oh eight Garfield, case number sixteen oh eight one. We reviewed above request and project and have no comments. So you're going to work with engineering, you said.
Absolutely.
Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call?
I just got one question.
Remind me. Okay, go ahead.
What's the lot size?
Five thousand five.
Five thousand square feet?
Absolutely, yeah.
And how many square feet in the property you're trying to build? Are you proposing to build? Are you living?
Probably, I'd say about maybe sixty percent of the lot.
Okay, on a five thousand square foot lot. So and a half units. I just, just wanting you to know that I think that's extremely dense.
Jimmy, John, just speak to us.
Okay, okay.
We can't be doing this. You've got to start looking up before, before all this.
Well, sometimes I have a question.
I know, but it's not fair to everyone else here that's waiting all night to get in and go and program it. Because if you lived in that neighborhood, you would have got them set of plans, you would have known the project, and you would have looked at it like the people that do come.
I come, I try to come to every public meeting that's posted on the city website. I will not only come, I will record the video, and I'm interested in every single zone in the city.
You say that. I'm just saying, try to do your background.
You're discouraging me and I'm not going to be discouraged.
I'm not discouraging, no. It's all I'm saying, is do a little background so everyone here knows the project they're here for. So we can keep this meeting going. That's all I said to you. That's all I said to you.
I would just confirm it, because I honestly, I, when I, when I just looked at point one one on the thing, I thought that was a mistake. I said, could someone actually be building two and a half stories on point one one acre? And I guess they are asking for that. I would just say that. That's thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call, third call, all that time the hearing closed. I want to see a new parking plan with something better than that. Not for us to do it. I think they can do it. That's their job. Back with a nice set of plans, a nice parking, and they're going to put it on that place, a nice, nice set of landscaping plans for the building. You know, you're building a big, big place in a small lot, and we should have all that stuff, so. Your new equal twenty-nine? Sally? Can I have a motion for twenty-nine? Twenty-fifth, you haven't said it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, matter number sixteen dash zero eight one, Gabriel Holmes, Gary Gabriel, for a variance of structuring new two point, two and a half story residential structure on the premises number one oh eight Garfield Street, Quincy Avenue, motion to continue to here into April twenty-fourth, and we hope you'll come back.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. We have a twenty second.
Second.
Second. Motion made second. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? No more.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Case number new business, case number Z seventeen twenty. Wanting for a variance to raise the existing second story roof and make it a full story on premise fifty-nine Russell Park. Is the applicant a representative here?
Jim Chen, seven thirty, Handoff Chief, the architect for the project. Fortunately, the owner cannot be here tonight, so I'll be representing. So the, I propose always to raise the existing second story roof and taking up by, up by the... Currently, it's a unfinished attic space. The reason we're here tonight is the, is that per zoning code, per zoning regulation code, that this is interpreted as a three-story, due to the fact that the...
There was a four inch drop between the four feet.
The three or four inch over, because from the exterior grade...
The other plans were different.
Right. From the exterior grade to the basement ceiling, it measures four feet, three inches. So anything over four, four feet, consider it a three-story.
So when they're, when they're degree, it's just, it's like three inches off.
Really, it's a two-story, go.
Are you just putting dormers in that roof that's there? Or are you lifting the whole roof?
No, it's the same peak of the building.
You're keeping the whole building. You're just putting two big giant dormers front and back.
That's correct.
Leaving the building the way it is, really. The roof lines have stayed.
Roof lines.
That's what I thought when I'm looking at it. They're not reading it. They're just, really, you're putting full funnel and rear dormers to make it full story. What are you doing in the back for, what are you doing for parking on that place? Are you changing the parking?
Well, the parking we've made, say, tandem parking.
But you got, it's a single family home. Do you have one driver?
One driver.
You don't have parking behind the building?
No.
All right.
The length is like forty feet.
No, I know, but I just, I just want to get a clear, because people do that. They, they end up pulling in their backyard when they put on a big addition. And my thing is, if you have any problems on putting a chain link fence from the back of the house to the back of the yard, so you would have gates, so no one can pull back there.
Sure.
And then the back, the back, put some Alaredees or something like that, the back, maybe the back harder.
Sure.
Then we'll... Any questions, the applicant?
No.
Yeah, well, I know. Thank you. We have a seat. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, closed. Got a letter here from the DPW, February twenty-second, twenty seventeen, fifty-nine Russell Park, case number Z seven twenty. We have reviewed the above request and project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Who stepped forward, say your name and address to the record, please?
Hi, it's Joey Giffey. Joe Ian Sarasoli, fifty-four Russell Park. And I can appreciate all the criticisms and, you know, it's only going to be this. And it's so benign in the statement. Those dormers are going to add how many bedrooms overall to the house? Because one question I have, if it will be owner occupied.
I just thought, I thought, I thought it was the owner doing this. I'll ask. Go ahead. Any of them?
Which, which, well, see, the situation is, communities in residential areas like Russell Park that want to go by the wayside, if these single-family homes are now going to constitute bedrooms that can either be rented or have borders or anything, I don't think this is a family home. I think this is going to be a situation where there'll be three bedrooms downstairs, another four or three upstairs, and I don't know of any family. And the driveway, let's not talk about parking on Russell Park, because that's insanity. But, you know, and I, the delay in having us being heard taught me a lot, is that people have lived in their homes. I've been in Russell Park thirty years. Mr. Chan, thirty years. Joe Ryan, thirty, we're all in the area for a substantial amount of time. And now we see our neighborhoods becoming not single-family homes. These are homes that are rooms, are being rented. And just because it looks very nice on paper, this is not what we get in the community. We're getting people that are renting. There will be, you know, with the first home, maybe it'll be, you know, six months from now there'll be other people coming in. And there'll be, you know, a diversity of people we don't know. I just think the amount of living space, our bedrooms. And I just feel it's going to really reflect on the neighborhood clearly that even though it's four inches, whatever, this, the home needs work. It's not that well done. But I am opposed to this for, A, I don't know who's going to be living there, and nobody can tell me that. If this house was to be sold in a year from now, can anybody say they can't rent those rooms or...
You can't say that to anyone. Anyone has a right to have three different families living in it.
Exactly, so the recall...
But anywhere in the city that there's property, so how would anyone know what they're going to do? I could do that. I could rent out to two different families.
But you're not going to, but you're not elevating the room. You're not front of the variance to say, this is what I want to do. I want to up the answer.
No, no, no. I'm saying, I'm saying, a two-story house.
Exactly.
Most people have two-story homes, most. And to have a two-story home that's yours, you own and you want to make dormers on it, is not asking a lot in a neighborhood where there's two-story homes.
But this will be three levels.
Well, it's semantics, is what it is. It's two living floors.
So you're going by, I think, so this is...
It's like three inches too much. It's four feet seven. Because when they built the foundations on those homes years ago, they built them off the ground.
It's a flood.
Three feet, right. So they built them like that so people wouldn't get their, their first floor flooded if there was ever a flood, the water starts coming in. That's where they built them a little higher. It's not that it's a livable, I mean, they're adding three stories above the ground. They're not even touching the roof line on this building. It's put the roof out.
On the side, right. I know that, on the side.
Right, making living space up there, which is now as tall as that.
But the bedrooms, so there's living, so...
And I see that downstairs, he took bedrooms out of downstairs, one or two, and moved them upstairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think he did.
Three dollars, going to five. It's three dollars, going to five.
No, there's four. I think it's four, right? Is it four?
Four on the first floor and three on the second.
And is the basement going to be kind of renovated or something?
No.
Too small, too low.
Despite that, Josie.
Is this the first floor?
They're going to be, the driveway as it is now, is maybe...
One. Four, then it's one. Now, we see, so they moved, they put two upstairs.
One, two, and three, those is ours.
Oh, second floor has...
And then there's one, two, three, so it's five, going from three to five. Have a total.
Oh, there's four. No, there's three upstairs. It's five, eight. And then there's...
Two down.
I thought there was one down.
Take them one.
Was three, one down, two.
Okay.
The fourth, first floor, one.
Well, I have...
Where are you looking? I'm not. This thing here says one bedroom.
Master bedroom, bedroom, bedroom.
Living room, staircase up. Right, one?
Yeah. Yeah, that's three upstairs, one, two, three.
There's three upstairs, right. I thought there was two downstairs.
One, two, remove the third one to the stairway.
The stairway, oh, all right. I thought they, all right. So they're adding two bedrooms.
Right. Two dormers and two bedrooms.
Well, I'm in opposition, I want to be up to my life on that street with people coming in. I can't help, it's just a neighborhood that's been in existence all with them for a number of years, and we like to know who our neighbors are. I just think it's going to be a parking lot as it is now on Russell Park. And, you know, the high school's right there. We don't know who's coming in there or who's going out, how often it's going to be here. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
My name is Joe Loria. I live at thirty-eight Russell Park. I lived there for thirty-two years. And I'm opposed to it because of the tremendous passageway of cars and trucks coming up from the southern area. And when I say trucks, I'm talking about huge trucks. And there's a sign down at the end of the street, it says, "No trucks allowed." And what I'm trying to create here is the atmosphere that it is a very, very busy roadway. It's a highway. People that travel on that street, at one time it was residential, but right now it's, it's turned commercial for that reason. And when I go up to the end of the street, they're really going into Boston, or they're going south to the community's south of the Odi Center. And they're doing that because they're cutting down on the number of traffic lights that they will have to encounter if, if they don't use the street. So what I'm saying here is, it's a tremendous amount of vehicle activity. And whatever is legal is legal, but whatever is illegal, in this case, because there's been no infrastructure changes that I'm aware of since I've lived there for thirty-two years, it's still the same neighborhood. So I just want to leave you with that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Opposed around the side?
They don't, do you explore, forty-four Russell Park? I'm finding, whatever, I oppose, it becomes like a boarding house. We all.
Mr. Duka?
Sorry, I got one more.
Sorry, go ahead.
Maggie, who's fifty Russell Park, I oppose because it adds more, potentially more traffic to the street with more bedrooms. The house currently has three bedrooms in it, now it's going to five. Parking's already a real problem on the street because Quincy Center, Quincy College, parking is a nightmare. We have more capacity in houses to live there, it'd be even more worse parking. People don't use their driveways, okay? Pull in front, and the rest of us have to fend, to get around, or option to get cars to, which I've done myself as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duka?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One, one city council, Michael LaFour, asks me to relate to the board. She apologized, she's not able to attend tonight, she had a conflict. She's heard from several neighbors, some concerns from the neighbors, and she asks that this board take those concerns into consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed around the side? Oh, I'm probably hearing close. There's, I got a letter, I gotta read this last year. Mr. Jay Duker, director of the legislature, David Stupan expressed my opposition, we have a mailing we got on zoning variance, we request fifty-nine Russell Park, request to raise the existing second-story roof, the living space is actually for bedrooms, which in turn, I believe, will be for tenants and ultimately become a boarding house. I plan to attend the meeting. She already spoke, so it should be enough. I know, there's other things that people are looking for on this, but here's my take on this, you're right, mom are indifferent. You own a piece of property, you have a right to have a two-and-a-half-story piece of property in residence A on that piece of property. Now, if I'm gonna go rent my place to people and have three different families living in one piece of property, I have that right, but I don't think that's a fair law either, but it's a law. Do I think it's right? No, it isn't. Shouldn't be probably more than two families living together, because that's how you could turn things into some crazy, crazy piece of property. But I'm not gonna penalize personally someone that wants to put two dormers on their house, put a couple extra bedrooms, move it upstairs, and make a bigger living room downstairs. So with that, I would like to see, no paving in the rear yard, just keep that driveway the way it is, like, no parking in the rear yard, like a gate up there, so it can only be a walkable behind it, so you can't turn it into a parking area back there. Like a line of Abreides in the back, putting the new dormers on, give the neighbors a little stuff. And, three, four white gate, maximum, just a pedestrian gate in the back from the house to the back of the, so it's, so it's cocky and, and that would be great. Those are my things, I wanted to deal with property, if it happened. I'm just gonna vote in favor.
Mr. another in favor, too. I understand the concerns in the neighborhood, but we are talking two dormers.
And it's, and it's still one, they're not touching the roof line. That's what, in front, they're leaving the roof line where it is.
Probably the base.
In favor?
Didn't get the answer to the question that was asked, not that it's...
Oh, I will, I will ask that, you're right. We will make a motion, and I still got that written down, you're right.
I was gonna ask this question. The owner of this property, is this an owner-occupied? What's the reason for increasing the bedrooms? Family size?
So I understand the building is owner-occupied. They have a large family, three kids.
It's owner-occupied.
Thank you, I mean, thank you. I wanted, I know that they asked, I don't want to make a memory that time, so...
That's not, that's not a ordinance or anything. If somebody does not want to live there and rent, that's gonna be...
I agree, but...
Obviously, Quincy's going to go further down.
I agree, and we can sell to somebody else. I agree, just, you'd asked a question, I wanted to know the answer.
I thank you.
Whether it was an investor or...
I thank you, but residential neighborhoods are not gonna be that popular, I guess.
It is only a couple inches, and it's a couple inches by virtue of an antiquated foundation, which I was educated on, so I'm in favor of the project.
I'm in favor of it as well.
Seeing that, if we could put these things in with that, Mr. Bryce Shannon?
Mr. Chairman, in matter Z seventeen, twenty, Franklin, for a variance to raise the existing second-story roof to make a full story on premises number fifty-nine Russell Park, I make a motion to grant the variance under the following conditions. No paving in the back, in the rear yard, no parking in the rear yard, a line of Abreides along the rear fence, and the, keep the existing of wide double gate, oh, change the existing double gate.